Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. My name is Jim Riley. I'm the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners here in Garrett County, and I want to welcome you to the Second Annual State of the Lake Meeting. I do want to introduce our staff. DNR and the state will take care of introductions of their staff, but we have Commissioner Gatto with us this evening, Bob Gatto; Commissioner Gregan Crawford; Monty Paganhardt, County Administrator; John Nelson from our Planning and Landings Division; and Carol's going to be Carol Riley, our official timekeeper this evening. When we get to the public comment portion, we will limit the comments to three minutes, and that's so we can get through the approximate 25 people, I believe, who have asked. Secretary is on his schedule this evening and has to be at another commitment, that's why I wanted to start promptly and move forward with this meeting and give you the opportunity then hopefully to ask as many questions or express your views at the end of the meeting. So with that, thank you for being here again, and I'll turn it over to Secretary Gregan.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming to what we're describing as our Second Annual State of the Lake Report, which is centered primarily on the comprehensive water quality monitoring program that we started in 2009. And of course, that's the focus, but there's a lot of related issues that necessarily come up. I might, we have a PowerPoint that I'm going to use. I'm going to do a little overview and give you some of the bottom-line findings over the last year through our monitoring program. Then Bruce Michaels, who heads our Resource Assessment Services, unit in our department handles the comprehensive monitoring program here, involves where the Chesapeake Bay as a whole, and they do a lot of other things. And then John Grace, who's the Head of Water Appropriations Department of Environment, has some updates for you. And Joe Gill, our Deputy Secretary, wants to talk a little bit about the lake, the size of the lake, the growth of things on the lake. And then lastly, I'm going to talk a little bit about where we're headed from here. I might start off by saying, on behalf of Governor O'Malley and Lieutenant Governor Anthony Brown, I want to express our regrets at the difficult storm that all Garrett County residents and some of Allegheny experienced, but particularly here in Garrett County. I can tell you that we deployed, to the request of the Governor, 16 of our natural resources police officers who were working on shifts 24/7. We had probably 10 of our sawyers from our forestry unit equipped and trained with to do chainsawing, as well as some park personnel. We had another group from our wildlife division. So we had a lot of people up here trying to help Garrett Countyans and the county government contend with the aftermath of the storm. And I know there's still work going on. Senator Edwards had asked the Governor to have DNR quote "cut through" a lot of the red tape with roadside tree permits, which I think we did, particularly to help out our municipal governments here. And I just want to say to you that I had a lot of feedback from our field personnel who were up there doing all the heavy lifting, and they were proud and honored to be part of the whole operation up here, but because they feel appropriately very attached to this county and all of you as its residents, and we're happy and honored to help out wherever we could, so I just wanted to leave you with that thought. The benefit of people pulling together and working together is always the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. So in terms of an overview, was it? Is that it? I wish I could say I was a fellow here holding that northern pike before I, that's on my bucket list, but just to start off, as I mentioned, this is the Second Annual State of the Lake Report. This gentleman is Matt Sell, who's one of our fisheries biologists. This is a record northern pike he caught this year on the lake. It's 43 inches long and 23 pounds. And they're dating it now, aging it, but this may have been roaming around the lake when this young man was in high school. So I imagine like, I imagine some of you like me are very envious of this record catch out of the lake here. Again, I wanted to, next slide, go through the overview. These are some bottom-line points. First one to remember, it's becoming more and more obvious as the lake and the watershed it sits in is a system, which means that it's hard to compartmentalize activities that happen in one part of the lake from affecting others. This is a whole system and it's interconnected, so we need to start thinking more about the watershed as a whole, because if we don't, the maintenance of Deep Creek Lake as a recreational and economic asset, not only to the county but to the state, depends upon the ecological balance in the lake itself. That is, we want to maintain a healthy lake that attracts people to come here to recreate in a variety of ways, from swimming to boating to fishing, to everything that's done here. And if we don't, looking ahead, recreation values will be impaired, economic values will drop. The next comment I want to make from our monitoring, bottom-line points here, the lake continues to be a healthy reservoir, as that's what it is, an impoundment, meeting federal Clean Water Act standards. I'm going to move on and talk a little bit about where we are. As you may know, last year, we were in the midst of Phase One of the sediment study, and we are working, we did Phase Two as a combination of funds from our department, from county government, thanks to our two commissioners, and from the Poverty Unions Association as well, and we thank them. We don't have a final report on the sediments, but we will have, I think, sometime in January, early February, but from our work to date, it's pretty clear that the sediment buildup is most evident in five or six coves in the southern end of the lake, and otherwise, it's not really much of an issue. Don't ask me for detail on this, because it's all being pranked at now, but that's a preliminary general comment that's accurate. As you know, as part of the, as you may know, as part of the rest of the sediment work we have to do, we're going to have a report out in January, one out in May, and then a final one in July. And the one that will come out around May, Mr. Michaels is going to get into this in more detail, we'll be looking at the whole watershed and sources of sediment and ways that individuals and governments and groups of individuals can help contribute to arresting sediment, et cetera, nutrient flows into the lake. But by next summer in July, the last phase of that sediment study will be to do a thorough analysis of alternatives for dealing with the dredging issues in the coves that are most impacted by sediment buildup, costs, alternatives, ways of disposing of it, just to put that in your calendars. I'm going to simply say, on fish, we had a 10,000 or so fish kill up here two summers ago, and most of our biologists and our counterparts in MDE attributed to precipitous drop in temperature, which created more stress with the fish, which led them to be susceptible to bacteria, very like, very much not unlike humans in a way. We seem to have been beyond that and moved beyond that, and abundance and spawning success of our fisheries seems to be good, so the fisheries in general are in good shape. Let me talk briefly here about something John Grace will elaborate on. I think this past summer was a, I don't know if it was a record, but we had very, very high water temperatures and very low precipitation, and that contributed to even worse situations, particularly in shallower parts of the lake, of lower lake levels. And you may have noticed, if you've checked around the country in terms of what's going on, that many of these large impoundments out in the west and southwest, which are much, much greater than, in extent than Deep Creek Lake, have been experiencing the same thing, very hot temperatures, very low precipitation, great drops in the reservoirs. They're getting into water rationing and all that. I'm not suggesting that we do that here, just suggesting here that, you know, the climates are changing, and I think as we look ahead, it's more likely than not that we're going to start to see trends of hotter summers and less precipitation. Wanted to mention a couple of things on where we are with Eurasian water milfoil. As we said last year, we would do a survey this summer, we did that, Bruce will go into the details. We found water milfoil in 86 acres of the lake's surface. It was always growing together with other native species. The increase in invasive species, even things like milfoil, will occur in impoundments because invasive species is a growing issue everywhere. Now, 86 acres for the lake's surfaces as a whole is a little over 2%. In some of the shallower coves, that percentage is higher, it's about 5% or 6%. We are going to, we haven't worked out the details, but we plan to do two pilots this summer, one selectively using 24D herbicide. We want to monitor the effects of that, obviously to make sure there's no ill effects. And we're also going to try to figure out a way to do some harvesting of boating channels in some of the shallower coves here to see how that goes. We haven't yet figured out a way to fund that, but we're hopeful, working together, we can do that. So that's sort of the overall bottom-line view, take-home points, water quality here, the way we measure it under the Clean Water Act is in good shape. If you remember last year, and Bruce will show you the various trophic levels of a lake like this, we are where we want to be. The key thing is, we've got to keep it that way. And we are going to be coming within the next, by the end of the summer, with some final work products on sedimentation buildup, particularly in the coves, and what might be done about them. And we're going to try to do some pilots on controlling in appropriate ways, not ways that ultimately are probably harmful to the lake and everything that lives in it, milfoil. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce Michaels and let him give you a lot of the detail. Thanks for your attention, and we'll be taking notes later as people come up and give us their feedback. Bruce?
Thanks, appreciate it. I also want to take an opportunity to thank the County Commissioners and everybody for turning out this evening to hear this presentation on the lake. John obviously hit all the key points, and what I'm going to try to do is now provide a few details about the components. I'm going to talk about four components. First will be the water quality. Second will be SAV, submerged aquatic vegetation, and Eurasian water milfoil. Then I'll follow that with some updates on our sediment study, the Deep Creek Lake Phase Two sediment plan, and then finally, I'll talk a little bit about our fisheries component and monitoring program. Our water quality monitoring goals, we are committed to continuing with a long-term comprehensive water quality monitoring program at Deep Creek Lake. The purpose of that is to characterize the existing conditions in the lakes, tributaries and coves. It helps us establish a baseline to look at change over time. And we understand that, you know, all lakes are a changing system, and with a lot of development, or potential development, over the years, we want to look at that, the impacts of the lake, and then develop a monitoring or a management plan to help keep the lake in a condition that favors everybody, and is good conditions for not only people that use the lake, but for the habitat, fisheries, and recreation as well. This is a map of our monitoring stations. We actually monitor the main channel plus the tributaries, and we have some stream gauges working with USGS that actually get the runoff coming into the lake. So this is what we've committed to doing. We actually have four years of monitoring now, and we'll present those results. The current monitoring program allows us to evaluate seasonal and spatial variations from a baseline condition. These things change every year depending on the amount of precipitation, temperature, and a lot of other factors. We have a very diverse plant community, SAV, with a wide range of species, which is good. And unfortunately, we also have an invasive species, Eurasian water milfoil. Each year that we have been monitoring, the weather conditions have varied pretty dramatically. In 2009, we had a very cool, moderately dry summer. 2010 was warm and a dry summer, and you'll remember 2010, we had that fish kill, actually the June temperatures were the highest that we had recorded at that time. And then we had 2011, which was another very warm, a wet summer, relatively speaking. And then finally, in 2012, extremely hot, hotter than we had in 2010, plus it was dry as well. And of course, that impacts the water level of the lake when you have hot and dry conditions. Okay. Water temperatures in 2012 were the highest that we have recorded during the time period 2009 to 2012. The oxygen levels in the lake are good in the surface waters. Our pH conductivity, all those nutrients help us support a diverse community. We don't have extremely high nutrient levels that cause algal blooms that we see in other areas in the state of the Chesapeake Bay. We do have algal blooms in the coves, in some of their shallow water, but the levels are not as extensive as they are in other areas. This is obviously a concern, we want to continue to monitor and assess this. The lake, MDE actually did a monitoring plan, a monitoring program back in 2008, looking at a potential TMDL for phosphorus, and the phosphorus levels were not as high that would contribute to a TMDL, and actually, the concentrations are more natural. The pH levels were from the surrounding areas, and so they decided not to do a TMDL. A TMDL stands for Total Maximum Daily Load. This is all under the Clean Water Act. We're required to meet fishable, swimmable waters under the Clean Water Act. If they do not meet those fishable, swimmable criteria, then a TMDL is put in place, and you are mandated to put in resource reductions. We identify what those sources are, and then you have to reduce them. The pH levels are natural pH levels from the surrounding environment, and no matter what you do, wouldn't necessarily bring them down. They weren't that high to cause a serious problem. When we look at other areas, other lakes, concentrations are not that high. Other water quality issues, there is a health advisory for the limit to consumption of bass and walleye, large fish, because of elevated mercury levels. This is a statewide concern in most lakes. We are seeing the impacts from coal-fired power plants out of the Midwest that is contributing to this high mercury levels in some of our waters. So it's not necessarily a local problem. Also, pH was considered an issue at one time, still has acid-bite range, but that's more up in the watershed. Oxygen levels are low in the bottom of the lake, and potentially, if you have more algae coming in, that would contribute to even lower oxygen levels. Most of our, most of the lake, though, is actually has good oxygen levels. The fish do not go into the very deep waters where the oxygen levels are low, and again, that's more of a naturally occurring issue. Looking at our water quality trends, I actually showed this slide last year. These are levels of the lake. Ligatrophic is basically a very pristine lake with no vegetation, no algae, and really no fish populations. Deep Creek Lake is considered mesotrophic, which has moderate nutrient levels in it. The nutrients are needed to help provide a very healthy ecosystem that has fish, plankton, underwater grasses. And if you look at this, we have comparable data from back in 1970, some earlier years, compared to what we've seen recently, and we're still characterized as mesotrophic, and that's what we, where we want to be. On the other hand, next slide, when you look at specific conductance over that same time period, we are seeing an increase in specific conductance, okay? Specific conductance is from dissolved salts and fertilizers, septic systems, de-icers and chemicals. This is, it indicates, this indicates changes due to development, and we need to continue our monitoring program so we can evaluate this. Even though those levels are going up, they've almost doubled, they're still not considered to have an impact on our living resources, but it is something that we want to continue to monitor, and it is an indication of increased development in the watershed. Okay, now I'm going to talk about aquatic vegetation, underwater grasses. I want you all to know that our SAV is a critical component to a healthy lake system. It helps reduce the nutrients. It helps stabilize the sediments on the bottom. It provides excellent habitat and food for fish and wildlife. So underwater grasses are good. They are something that a good, healthy ecosystem should have to support a good fisheries population. DNR in 2010 established an SAV survey program. We have six sites throughout the lake. We actually send divers out to characterize the underwater grasses. We're doing species identification, and part of that has come that we have multiple species, 10 to 12 different species, which shows that, again, you have a diverse, well-developed grass program. Unfortunately, you also have Eurasian water milfoil, which is an invasive species. And in 2012, we went out and did an entire survey of all the lake area, and we're committed to going out and doing this again. That survey, as John indicated, we have 86 acres with some level of Eurasian water milfoil identified in it, and the range is from, you know, less than a tenth of an acre to, some areas have up to 5 to 15 acres with Eurasian water milfoil mixed in with other species. John indicated 2.3, the percent of the lake's surface has Eurasian water milfoil, and 5.8% or almost 6% of the shallows, we were able to identify Eurasian water milfoil in those areas. Okay. One of the key things, though, most of the Eurasian water milfoil, the highest density populations are in the southeastern portion. That said, when we looked at our transect, things that we've been doing for three years, and we have identified Eurasian water milfoil in the transects themselves, the transect data showed there was no significant difference of Eurasian water milfoil, an increase between 2010 and 11 and 12. That's a good sign, that it's not overwhelming and taking over and pushing out the other species. Secondly, when you look at it at the surface, you see not just Eurasian water milfoil, but other species, common podomogetans, which are pondweed, and balacinaria, which is wild celery, they occupy almost all of our shallow water habitats, as well as the Eurasian water What are the control options? John mentioned, too, that we're going to pursue, the most effective, lowest impact on a large-scale area would be using the herbicide 24D. Potentially, this would be something that would need repeated applications. And you have to remember, there is no one silver bullet for eradicating Eurasian water milfoil. It's in the system, it's in Deep Creek Lake, and it's going to stay in there unless we were to wipe out everything in the lake and kill all the underwater grasses, and of course, that would be, you know, just wipe out all the fish as well. The cost of this 24D application is about $500 to $1,000 per acre. It can be used in a targeted area. We are recommending that we do a pilot study this year, identify an area where there's a problem, where we see it, that it's grown up on the surface, that is impeding recreational uses, and try to treat a small area. We will monitor the impacts of that, make sure that there are no detrimental impacts on a larger area. We wouldn't expect anything, but we would want to make sure that through a monitoring program, that we assess any of those impacts. 24D has very low toxicity to most fish. There are obviously concerns about putting any chemical in the water, but this has the most benign effect on anything that we can find. And our staff basically did a thorough evaluation of, you know, the whole country and, you know, even other parts of the world, looking at what are the control measures. And again, every control measure has a negative impact, as well as the positive impact of helping to reduce Eurasian water milfoil. Local control measures include bending mats. We actually had a program this last year that the Park Service initiated, that went fairly well. There were six permits, and the cost on that is anywhere from $300 to $500 per mat, and that includes the cost and the installation. Mechanical harvesting, this is another control option. What it does is you go in there and you actually mow it. When the grasses get up towards the surface, you can actually go in, they have special equipment mounted on a large boat with a barge where they collect the material. There are, it's fairly expensive, anywhere from $8,000 to $10,000, and that's just for a couple of days. There's transport cost to get the boats up here. We're going to be working to potentially implement on a small scale to look at what we could do with implementing some type of harvesting. The drawbacks is, you're actually, when you cut it, you have to make sure that you get all the shoots, because you're raising water milfoil, and you just cut the shoots, and they stay in the water, they can drop down and reseed themselves, replant themselves, and come up elsewhere. You also have to be very concerned about the equipment that you bring in, that you don't bring in any other invasive species. So those are things that we would have to pay attention to before we just let somebody come in there. before we just let somebody come in there. Depends on the amount of SAD. So don't have an estimate right there. But I mean, you can cover, you know, pretty significant area. We estimate you could probably do, you know, maybe four or five coves or whatever, depending on what you wanted to do. If you just wanted to do a channel, that might be something to look at. Other control options that we rejected, herbicides other than 2-4-D, they have impacts to all SAD, but the 2-4-D, 2-4-D is more specific to Eurasian watermilk foal. And other herbicides are less effective in a large-scale setting that could disperse and kill other beneficial species. Biological controls, we've looked at those as well. Grass carp are illegal in Maryland. The milkfoal weevils have not been approved in Maryland as well. They would be considered an invasive species. They are not indigenous to Maryland. So we would be bringing in another species that we don't know what the unintended consequences of bringing in some other species. It's already been banned in the Chesapeake Bay. If you brought it into Deep Creek Lake, you'd have a possibility of it expanding elsewhere.
Water goes the other way.
It's been banned there, so why would we put it here? It's very expensive. Milkfoil, milkfoil is very, the milkfoil weevils are very expensive, like $1,000 per acre. The efficiency of something like that as Deep Creek Lake hasn't been shown in other reasons. The milkfoil is very slow to take over. And the weevils are actually a favorite food of sunfish. We have a lot of sunfish in Deep Creek Lake. And so potentially, you would be providing a very expensive appetizer for our sunfish. Going forward for the upcoming year, we're going to look at, again, continue with our SAD surveys at the six locations. We do that three times a year. We're going to do our targeted Eurasian watermilk foal assessment again. That is scheduled for June of 2013. And then we're going to look at the, implementing the pilot control actions that we've talked about. The proposed evaluation or targeted, proposed projects to evaluate the effectiveness of our pilot projects for Eurasian watermilk foal, again, will be the herbicide 2-4-D and harvesting in limited areas. Okay, I'm now going to talk about the Phase II sediment plan. And first of all, I want to thank, there was a group of individuals that gave us some insights and provided input to the actual, the Phase II plan, Morgan France, who was here, and others. We certainly appreciate their information. We've completed all the fieldwork associated with the Phase II plan. We had a team out here from our Maryland Geological Survey that went to work in April. Conditions weren't the best, it was cold and snowy. But they were able to complete their work. They did the sub-bottom seismic surveys and their bathymetry, which is the bottom mapping, looking at the depths of the water. We did a complete side scan sonar imagery of the lake. It allows you to go down through the sediment, see how deep it is to all where, to where the original bottom was. All this information with GPS reference to the shoreline. We did videos, we compared it to historical bottom data. May through September, Maryland Geological Survey did all the processing, the quality control, quality assurance with the data. And then October, we sent, MDS came back out here and basically collected 42 cores throughout the lake. That actually allows us to take those cores and analyze them for potential contaminants to see how much material has been deposited. And finally, we have our alternatives analysis that John talked about. Those are actually, contracts have actually gone out. We're waiting for the Board of Public Works to approve it before they go out to bid. This is a map of the bathymetry and seismic work. Shows the depth of our water, where our shallow waters are and our deeper waters. And then the next slide is where we collected the 42 sediment cores throughout the lake. The core length ranged from zero, which was when we hit rock, all the way down to seven feet in length that we were able to go down in the sediment, which is actually reaching through the bottom of the original soils. The average length of the core was about three feet. Again, we took those cores, we're working on them in the lab. The good news is that we haven't found any toxics, contaminants in any of the sediments that we've looked at, which means if, when you're doing dredging, that it's much easier to dispose of the material. You don't have to take special precautions to dispose of and handle potential contaminants. So it's good news that there's no contaminants in the sediments that we've found so far. Future plans for the sediment work, we're going to complete all the analysis of the sediment cores that we have. And as a matter of fact, DNR, we decided to go out and send a subset of these cores to do some carbon dating so we can actually determine when the greatest amount of sediment came in. You're looking at basically 87 years of sedimentation. And some of those sediments, and some of the coves look about, you know, 20 inches. In four or five of the coves, we have 20-plus inches of sediment. 20-plus inches over 87 years is less than a quarter of an inch a year. We want to try to determine if we can go back and look at the historical carbon dating and find out, did the majority of it come during one specific time? And will give us more information to help make decisions on how we address the management of the sediments. Contractors, again, talked about the, doing a sediment reduction plan. You cannot take sediment and remove it for a dredging problem without first addressing how it is getting into the lake and keeping it from coming in. You're not going to dredge and then wait, you know, 20 years and then dredge again. You need to keep the sediment. So part of, one of the contractors will look at a sediment reduction plan and share that information to local governments and the state. And then they'll also develop that alternatives analysis. Should they, should they decide that, you know, dredging would be an option, or what would be the option? What are the costs associated with it? What are the methods? And then what are the impacts? I mean, if you do dredging, it takes time. You can't do boating activity right around where you're doing the dredging. So those are things that they'll actually look at. Okay. Finally, the last thing I'm going to talk about is fisheries. Unfortunately, Al Klotz is our resident fisheries biologist, couldn't be here. He was here last year, he did an awesome job. Bottom line is the fisheries around Deep Creek Lake are really, really good. You all remember that in 2010, we had that fish kill of about 10,000 fish, mainly yellow perch walleye, small mouth bass, small mouth bass. We did a survey in the spring, a walleye survey. Walleye are the most abundant game fish species in Deep Creek Lake. They have very diverse size and even, you know, it's over 20 inches long. The 2012 walleye abundance value was one of the highest recorded to date at Deep Creek Lake. We also, in the spring, we conducted a corrective stocking of 10,000 largemouth bass fingerlings. And this was in response to the another fish kill. And we distributed those in several locations of the lake. Conducting, we also, in the summer of 2012, they conducted seine surveys to monitor the reproductive success of largemouth, smallmouth, yellow perch. And they were all rated, again, largemouth was rated good, and it was excellent for smallmouth and yellow perch. DNR Fisheries obtained the length and weight of some of the angler catch and tournaments they've had at Deep Creek Lake. The Fisheries Service is still working on the analyzing data, but the initial information from the anglers appears that the fishing hasn't improved since 2010. And finally, we were actually, fisheries people were scheduled to go out to do a total comprehensive fish population survey, but you all had a little bit of snow, so it was postponed. But they're going to try to get out there and do that. I'm now going to introduce John Brace from MDE, and he's going to talk about the water levels.
I just have a few slides to show some data concerning water this year in Garrett County and on the lake in relationship to Deep Creek Lake. Okay, this first plot is a download from the United States Geological Survey's Dream Gauge on the Okeagania River in Oakland. This is the gauge that has the longest period of record in the area. And it allows us to kind of, to compare how any particular year does with the long-term data. The long-term data is shown with this orange line. That represents the median daily values starting from November of 2011 to November of 2012. Like any stream in Maryland, the highest flows are always in the spring, no surprise, and the lowest flows typically occur late September. This year, we started out pretty good in the fall and winter. And, but what happened is, right about this time in May, precipitation slowed down, temperatures climbed up higher than normal, and stream flow dropped to about 20% of what it typically would be. So that continued, July was pretty good as far as precipice, and we had a little bump up. But after that period, later in August, it again was lower than normal at about 20%. So this was a pretty challenging year as far as amount of water in the system. This is a graph, I've shown this graph before. Last year, if you were here, this is an estimate of how much water, in terms of feet of lake level, entered Deep Creek Lake. And every bar on this graph, every bar, every bar on this graph represents a different year from the period of July through September. So it's not a full year, we're just looking at the summer period when the lake is stressed the most, how much water actually comes into the lake. Each, each year is divided into two parts. The yellow is the rainfall, and the blue is the estimated inflow into the lake.
How'd you get the inflow?
That's a good question. Bruce showed a slide showing a USGS gauge is in the watershed going into the lake.
Yeah, what a little of that line through.
Yeah, good question. The Cherry Creek Gauge was used to estimate the inflow. So we know the drainage area above that gauge is about, from the top of my head, I think it's about 12 or 13 miles. The total lake drainage area is about 62 miles square. So that gauge is multiplied. What we had to do to get the whole record of 40 years was we had to correlate the gauge at Cherry Creek, because the Cherry Creek Gauge only has four or five years of data. So we had to correlate the Cherry Creek Gauge with the Oakland Gauge and extend the record, basically simulate what happened during other years. So I just want to point out that 2012, we're here, that's the eighth lowest of these 41 years. Bruce talked about how bad 2010 was, and I'm not telling you anything if you don't know already. 2010 was the second worst. 99 was one of those years where the lake level really suffered. And when we look at the lake level graphs, 99 was worse than many, any of the other years. Okay, so we had, that's basically cooperates with Bruce was talking about, that it was a relatively dry year. And, I just want to show 2011. Here's 2011, which was a wetting year. And that represents about two and a quarter foot of lake water going into the lake. Okay, thanks. So, next slide. So here we are, we've got three lines on this graph, well, actually five lines on the graph. This, this line is the upper wool ban. That's established in the permit. This is the lower wool ban line. And there's three different years here. 2012 is this olive drab color. We started out worse this year of the last, than any of the last three years. And part of the reason for that, if you recall back to that first line I showed, the flow start going in, the natural flow was much lower in May than it was the other, the long-term years. In addition, this year, at the end of May, right around Memorial Day period or before, Brookfield Power had to do an emergency repair to the valve seats, to the two large, there's two large butterfly valves that control, allow the water or can shut off the water going to the two generators at the power plant. These valves, you know, just rotate on an axis. But for them to close, they have to close up against something. And what they close up against is the valve seat. And the valve seats were damaged, and there was a potential that a ring would be released and actually get into the generator and destroy the generator. So they had to take emergency action to remove those valve seats. In preparation in doing that, because they were removing the valve seats, they had to lower the lake to provide enough storage should we have a large storm. And that's why we started out the year 2012 lower than we would have liked. They had to drop the lake about a third of a foot. We, you know, had a rough year. We hung right around the lower wool ban for most of the year until we got a little more rain in, it looks like, I'm not sure the date there. The middle's a bit of a.
Do you know the typical outflow is?
When the, when the turbines run, they run. Well, yeah, we do have, we have that data reported to us. I don't know off the top of my head.
Does it exceed the inflow?
Can't, can't exceed the inflow. But what happens is, it exceeds the inflow seasonally. So in the summer, the outflow is obviously exceeding the inflow. But in the fall and winter, the inflow replenishes the storage. So on an annual basis, it's equal. I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. I just want to point out, I know a lot of you probably were aware, this was a drawdown, a second drawdown that Brookfield instituted this year because of the hurricane coming and their fear of not being able to accommodate the runoff as a result of the snow, pretty good snow and rain. I think that's pretty much it from here, just my best slide. That's my contact information. If you have questions that you're not able to ask me today, or I'm unable to respond to, whatever, please feel free to contact me with any questions about the permit for lake levels.
Okay, good evening, I'm, my name is Joe Gilliam, Deputy Secretary of DNR. And first of all, next slide, Bruce. See that fellow right here on the surfboard? That's not me. Just to be very clear. I want to talk a little bit about the uses of the lake. Next slide, Bruce. You ever wondered about the number of boats that are actually on the lake? The number is 5,300. The lake staff does a count twice every year during the summer. The numbers remain relatively constant over time. To give an idea of the size of that, the lake, the surface area of the lake is 3,900 acres. So it's about, every boat- 3,900 acres, so it's about, every boat around the lake at the same time would be a boat for every acre and a half. There's a trend toward bigger boats on the lake, the recent example being the 26-foot boat with the molded platform. There's a trend with lake owners, property owners asking for longer piers and wider piers to access the lake. And I mention the trend because, as, as one knows, the lake is not getting any bigger. It is the same size that it has been since it was created. A recent trend is wakeboarding on the lake, as well as in the Chesapeake Bay. There have been a number of regulatory changes that have been made in response to usage on the lake. Several years ago, there was a limitation placed on the number of power boats to include the number of personal watercraft, in large part in response to the number of, growing number of PWCs on the lake. There's now an additional limitation on wakeboarding of 200 feet from any structure, platform, pier. That has also come about as a result of statewide changes in boating usage. And as I indicated, both of those regulations, relatively new, are in response to the things that are happening on the lake. Which brings me to the next slide, and that is, the question of exactly, how many boats can be on the lake? What is the, what is the actual carrying capacity, such that when you reach that limitation, you can no longer have any more boats and have the recreational experience that people would like to have when they come to Deep Creek Lake? We do, we do not have that capacity, we have not done carrying capacity in many years. We did do a study in 2003, looking at the tolerance to crowding of various types of recreational activity, like wakeboarding and like PWCs and whatnot. We've also not done a study on the maximum buildout of dock slips, because obviously the more dock slips there are on the lake, the more potential for the number of boats to increase that are on the lake. And I present this information for two reasons, one of which is that every survey of the lake on an annual basis should take a look at the uses, and should take a look at the recreational experience that members of the lake are having out of Deep Creek. And secondly, I think that what the data shows is that there's always a danger in a closed system, which is what a lake is, a reservoir is, of cumulative impacts of use. You know, eventually, as I mentioned before, you reach a place, you reach a stage where you really can't add any more uses to the lake. And what we would like to do is to be in a position, managing the lake going forward, to anticipate what and when and how that will occur, and to manage forward so that we do so in a responsible fashion. I know that Carolyn Matthews, our lake manager, has been talking to many people about these issues, including the Property Owners Association. I also know that Carolyn has, in her time here, done a terrific job, and we are very glad to have her as our lake manager. Thank you all.
Hi, John Griffin, I just wanted to wrap up, and then we're gonna, as Commissioner Rayleigh said, open it up for limited testimony. I think what we'll try to do, it's about five o'clock, is take notes, and then perhaps I and others will get up at the end and comment on questions or comments made, rather than trying to do it speaker by speaker, or we're gonna blow our, our timing. As, as we've been saying, and this was a slide from last year, we've got to start to look in a broader context, at the lake in the context of the watershed within which it lives, because it is a system. And Bruce, we had the same slide up here last year, about looking at developing a broader watershed management plan for this lake. I want to tell you that we've had, as a department, several ongoing discussions with your county commissioners, and we're working now to develop the details of how we might approach developing a long-term watershed management plan, as well as some other things along the way. Hopefully, within the next month or two, we'll have a little more jointly to say about all that. So, again, I want to thank all of you for coming, I want to thank the staff, Joe mentioned, our great lake manager Carolyn Matthews, John Wilson, our chief planner, maybe missing some people, two of our finest natural resources police officers here with us, I may have missed somebody. I know David Marburg is here, who does a great job as the chair of the PRV board, and... So, we're gonna allow the testimony to go forward, and somebody here, somebody has a dong here, so if you're, three, three minutes, you're gonna get a dong. Thank you.
All right, just real quick, I want to thank the state for their help during the recent storm. I mean, I think that each of you have seen the crews out there, and I can tell you that Governor O'Malley did a lot more than just come to Garrett County on Thursday. He deployed the resources necessary to get this storm cleaned up, and I think you've seen, you know, the results of that. I did want to recognize Chris Yule from the governor's office, who is our Rutherford, Maryland. He represents a lot more than Western Maryland now, but Chris gets out here and helps us a lot, and, you know, is kind of our ear to the governor as well, so I appreciate him being here. What, what you've seen so far has been achieved through a partnership. Partnership between several organizations within this county, as well as the county government, as well as the Department of Natural Resources and the Maryland Department of the Environment. We will take this and put electronic copies, you know, when we get this electronically, we'll put it on our website. I know that garretssocial.com is carrying it live, and they'll have it archived, I believe, so you'll be able to go over there. So if you have friends, garretssocial.com would be the location to get that. At this point, we have about 22 speakers, three minutes each means we'll just get in within that hour timeframe, and get the secretary out of here by, by 6:00 PM, which he needs to do. One of the other things I'm proud to announce is that, is that Garrett County is working with MDE and the USGS on some water monitoring ourselves. We're committing some money towards water monitoring and fractured rock studies. So, I want you to know that we, the commissioners, are committed to trying to improve water quality, to look at long-term improvements in the watershed, and especially with, you know, our commitment to Deep Creek Lake. With that said, if you're a me-too, there's nothing wrong with entering your name into the record tonight that you say "I agree" with the other speakers here, please, you know, be brief, and let's get to the point of, you know, what it is that we need to share that has not already been covered by DNR and by the secretary this evening. So with that, first speaker is Dick Baldwin. And I believe Carol has a microphone, and she's going to be sharing with people, is that right, Carol? But how about a microphone? I thought it was a microphone that was, didn't work. So I'm gonna have to ask that you come forward then and use the podium then.
If you called five, the first five people, they could then go one right after those, they wouldn't, that makes it go faster?
Okay. Richard Madlik, that was...
I just want to go first either, so... My concern is, Deep Creek Lake, primary concern is not the ease or lake level.
Microphone?
I've got a small bit.
Miss pleasure check.
Am I in now? My concern is lake safety is part, DNR park safety, really, but here at this meeting, it's DNR, it's the lake, Deep Creek Lake safety, which comes down to mostly boat safety. Now, I had a PIA into DNR for, PIA, DIA, which is to get freedom of information, from DNR for five months. Finally, within like a last week, I got some information. It was totally useless, and in fact, I'd even conflicted with DNR information locally. Get quantity of accidents, which is of no use to analyze data, as other people have analyzed in their areas, has to get mitigations, to come up with mitigations to prevent these accidents, rather than just inspection of what DNR does. I'm sure they'll argue with me on that, but...
That's worth it, listen now.
So, I'm gonna refer to my notes here a little bit. I've been working with one of the DNR park managers in safety issues, very little, and I've been trying to work this issue, in fact, boat safety, I've actually gone and interviewed some of the boat rental agencies. I'm looking for data now, data is what, what we all need, and it's there. I've been stonewalled by, by DNR headquarters all this time, and now they want me to pay to do what I think is their job, to gather the data that needs to help prevent the accidents. Let me go back to my, my notes here. So I'm asking the secretary if he can get me involved. I've been doing this professionally for 50 years, so I am skilled at it, I think. And that's what I'm asking him, to be able to get involved, to get the data, to help them get the data, so that we can discuss the mitigations. That's close enough to what my notes are. Thank you.
Okay, after Richard Madlik is Scott Johnson.
All right, I'm gonna read this quick, since I only have three minutes. The subject is the personal impact of the decline of green lake code. First of all, who am I? I'm a Garrett County, Maryland taxpayer. I estimated I paid over $200,000 in the last 30 years for Deep Creek Lake front lots, where the buildings were near zero value. I've been a lakefront property owner on Deep Creek Lake, family owned since 1956, sole owner since 1980. My family lives on Deep Creek Lake four to five months a year. My full-time residence is in La Veyo, Maryland. My wife and children grew up on Deep Creek Lake, spending money on water sports equipment, meals, food, entertainment, and another sum that probably reaches hundreds of $200,000 in that period of time. I have owned four boats and five personal watercrafts that were purchased on Deep Creek Lake, of which I paid tax, sales tax, purchase gas, lane, boat tax, et cetera, all to the sum of $100,000 plus. I paid for dock fees on two different permits since 1980, and they could now cost $200 each. But most of all, I'm a family that paid dearly to enjoy, to enjoy the wonderful trade of the Deep Creek Lake. Clean water, free vegetation allowed for my children and now my grandchildren to swim and play in the waters just off my dock. But now it's impossible to swim in the waters off my dock, after mid-July, because of the extreme amount of vegetation and the awful smell from rotting vegetation and goose crap. To boat, water, ski, and swim well into September, with enough water to float my boat. The last several years, I pulled my boat and my docks in August due to low water levels, while the wastewater rafters and other water releases continued during dry conditions, and the wicked gates continue to leak. To sit on my dock and experience the fresh air and clean waters, weather is now, water that is now filled with the awful smell from rotting vegetation, no doubt on the water surface, covered, and covered with one pound a day per goose crap. And then, in August, it turns to mud. Need I go on? I have been attending meetings, paying dues to some organizations, such as the Property Owners Association. I attend the Policy Review Board, I go to Garrett County Board of Commissioner meetings. The Policy Review Board tries to understand and recommend changes to the policy that help, but are ignored, either due to existing regulations that are outdated or wrong altogether. The board needs members of ours that are not political, and represents the co-owners and the lake user that have seen what the lake can be. I have listened to all kinds of experts from several organizations from the state of Maryland. I've listened to many, many reviews of studies from these same organizations for several years. They present charts that are designed to show what they want to show.
You want me to quit? I appreciate it. Okay. We can share it later on, if you gave us a print copy, we can share it with the secretary.
Just give it to me.
Okay. Scott Johnson, next would be Brian Greenberg.
My name is Scott Johnson, I'm a resident of Deep Creek Lake, live on State Park Road. And I want to compliment the state agencies that are involved in identifying the causes of the problems we're seeing at Deep Creek Lake. Bad news is, it might be 90 years too late. Good news is, something is being done about it, and I applaud...
Secretary Griffin?
For his efforts, and we need to continue to pay attention to it. I think that when cooler heads prevail, and approach this in a level-headed way, we'll get the job done. When we start flying off the handle, not like these, I'm, I'm not talking about the two people that just spoke, but they have real concerns, and I know they're interested in getting solutions. But when we have a level approach, as opposed to flying off the handle, we will get things done. The state wants this to be done, the county wants it to be done, the residents of Deep Creek Lake, and the vacationers, and property owners, all want it to be done. And keep up the good work, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Brian Greenberg, and then Alan Williams.
My comments are addressed to the commissioners and to Secretary Griffin and staff from the DNR and MDE, but I especially want to address my fellow citizens who share the same problems I want to discuss today. Secretary Griffin, you noted last year, and again today, in front of these stakeholders, that watershed management is key to effective lake management. We wholeheartedly agree and commend you for this position, and it's important and noteworthy that initial baby steps are being taken in the direction of discussions of watershed management. But, as you know, unlike many other regions, rivers and lakes, Deep Creek Lake lacks a watershed management approach. Instead, we have a fragmented, incomplete, and ineffective lake management system. Referencing the ideal of a watershed management system doesn't change our realities here. The lake is managed to promote recreational use and revenue generation by the state and county. Investments in the lake's regeneration and restoration from the state and the county benefit from those revenues. A key part, now, these are key parts of sustainable management, are effectively absent. Key to a watershed management approach, and I want to suggest to you, as you discussed this, in the, with, between the commissioners and the DNR, is engaging citizens and local stakeholders from the top of the watershed on down. The results of this current management approach include sedimentation, shoreline erosion, invasive aquatic plants, deteriorating water quality, and resulting loss of recreational value for residents and visitors. And the core message, I think I heard from the DNR and MDE today, is that the lake is basically fine. And my core message back to you is, that that summary conclusion differs so sharply from the experience of my family, and essentially, all of the families we know on the lake, as to perhaps be from another planet. So the processes we see threaten the amenity, ecological, and economic value of the lake. Along with these losses come risks of declining property values and falling state and county revenue. In short, public and private interests are seriously threatened. Neither, okay, I stop. I take my last moment here to tell you that putting 24D into the lake is a lousy idea, and if you think it's a good idea to put this herbicide into the water, I, I suggest that you communicate to the county and state tourism bureau that they can come, and kids, and grandkids can marinate in 24D during their vacations at the lake. It will do wonders for tourism.
Well, Brian's gonna be a tough act to follow. I'm Ellen Williams, my family has owned property on the lake since the 1940s. This lake was the best part of my growing up years, here at the lake in the summers. All right. The lake is the... The lake is the best part of my growing up years. It's the place I've chosen to retire to. My four children and now my grandchildren are busy building good memories here, too. We care deeply about the lake, not as a financial investment, but as the family's home. This is the place my son, who is about to deploy to Afghanistan again, he is here relaxing because this is where he relaxes best in the world. I can tell you it's very hard to be a good steward of the lake, to ensure that it's still here for future generations. I got a letter this summer, my family got a letter this summer, telling us about infractions that we had committed. The letter was seminal for three things. It was the first time that I had actually seen a list of things we're not supposed to do on the budget and the, and the easement. There are obvious things we all know about, you can't cut down trees and that kind of thing, but there were things that I didn't know about. I didn't know you couldn't have an outlet or a light within 20 feet of the water. And yet, these things have been there for 40 years. The second thing that struck me was the letter itself. It made me feel like a five-year-old bad girl who had just done something really naughty. And the final thing that bothered me was that it took two visits by lake management staff. One to find the infraction, and another to come back and confirm that I had fixed it when I said I had fixed it. I don't understand why the lake management office is spending all of their time in land management. That's not helping the lake. Meanwhile, the lake is deteriorating. We know all about the erosion, sediments building up, the invasive species, boating safety is a big issue. We had a couple of incidents this year in which I or my grandchildren were in the water, and a boat cruised by within 15 feet of the person in the water, right off our dock. These are all symptoms that, in a policy level, the lake isn't managed, managed effectively. They're not, we're not looking at the right thing, we need, at the right things. It's time to regroup to save the lake. We need a different approach. We need to truly look at this as a watershed, a, a system. We need programs to deal with these issues, not just to keep studying and studying, we need to start doing. We need resources, almost done, from all those with responsibility and interest in the lake. And finally, we need a new management structure that includes all stakeholders as constructive partners, instead of the current dysfunctional and adversarial relationships. We need to work together to be good stewards of the lake.
Paul Weiler, and then Dan Brandt.
My name's Paul Weiler, I've had a home on the lake for 40 years, and I've seen some decline in the lake. I don't live here full-time, but I live here about half the year, maybe a little bit more even, because we love it. And the grandchildren and children's stories, mine are the same as everybody else's, and I won't bore you with them. What I do want to talk to you about is a plan that we discovered, we being friends with Deep Creek Lake. When the state of Maryland decided to purchase the lake, it developed a Deep Creek Lake Recreation and Land Use Plan as a guide to how to manage and run the lake. And an important part of this was recommendations for lake management, and a specific assignment of roles to the DNR, to the Policy and Review Board, and to the county. Okay, so we took a look at this plan, and the plan is made up of 47 specific recommendations, broken down into seven categories, categories being water quality, adjacent land use, land carrying capacity, visitor access, commercial uses, fishing, wildlife management, and management roles and responsibilities.